Good evening. I want to call to order the June 10, 2013, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Steve Sandlin will listen to our prayer and our pledge. Steve?
Let us pray. Definitely, Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. Father, we pray that you continue to watch over us, guide, guard, and direct us each and every day. Pray that we do the works of the county here in response for the people and for the county as far as we grow better and have a better county. Father, we pray that these storms that happened today, that there's no one that was in those line of storms that's caused by death or anything, and we hope everybody come out all right on that. We thank you for the rain, but we hope lives are spared. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over us, guide, guard, and direct us, and one day, Father, we pray we'll be in heaven with you. In Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Did you call the roll, please, Gal?
Rhonda Allen, Jim Everwater, Veronica Buchanan, Will Jordan, Mike Kush, Craig Lynch, Pettis Reed, Steve Sandlin, Mike Vought, Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gal. This time we'll call on our Vice Chair Craig Lynch for the approval of the May 13 minute, minutes, meeting minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have so much motion they could approve this May 13.
Have a motion to approve. Need a second.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Items withdrawn or deferred? Doug?
Neither withdrawn or deferred, sir.
Item six, submitted for preliminary plat approval. Item A, Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, reapproval. Item number is thirteen dash one zero zero four. Five lots on nine point two six acres, zoned RM located off Barfield Crescent Road, New South Developers LLC developer. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this is the Ridge View at Crescent Ridge, section two. This is a reapproval that has before you tonight. The property is located off of Barfield Crescent Road. It's on the west side. The preliminary plat for this particular section was originally approved by the Planning Commission at their September 24, 2012, meeting. The reason it's coming back before you tonight is because the street layout has changed. The cul-de-sac used to go a little further into the property than it does. You should have a reduced copy of the plans at your table for review. Nothing else really has changed with it, but that was a significant enough change for us to have to bring it back for your reconsideration. With that, I'll ask Mr. Corbett if he had any other comments regarding the engineering of the property.
The changes they made on the plat actually didn't change the drainage, so it still meets our requirements, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
And a second. Now discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item eight, submitted for site plan approval. Item A, Buddhist Temple. This is a revision. Item number one three dash three zero one four. New construction of 2,426 square feet on 17.99 acres, zoned residential medium density, located off four eight eight zero Barfield Crescent Road. Mr. Von Prada Munkin is applicant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Barfield Crescent Road. It's right to the east of the intersection with Armstrong Valley Road and Midland Road. It changes names at that intersection. You'll probably remember this site plan. We've seen it a couple times. It was originally approved by the Planning Commission at their May 29, 2012, meeting. It was then again reconsidered by the Commission at their September 10, 2012, meeting. The reason for that resubmitment was the original plan had shown the restrooms in the building they were proposing. They decided to move those restrooms into a separate building. The reason it's coming before you tonight is because they're enlarging the size of the restroom facility. The zoning ordinance does give us a certain amount of leeway to approve what are called minor deviations to site plans. It's within a certain percentage, five percent, basically, of the original total of the construction. However, what they're proposing going from 300 to 626 square feet is basically doubling the size, so we were not able to do this administratively, which is why it's being brought back before you. Besides that change, everything else is the same. The phasing's the same. They're still going to do the existing building, renovate that into what they originally were going to, their area, their meditation area. So really, the only change here is enlarging the restroom facility. Everything else is the same, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I think we skipped an item, Mr. Chairman, the final plat we ever request.
I'm sorry, you guys. Thank you, Steve. Back up to item seven, submitted for waiver, minor plat approval. It's item A, Mark and Linda Shackler. That's their property, and the item number is one three two zero one four. One lot on 2.74 acres, zoned RL, located along State Highway 99. Mark and Linda Shackler are applicants, includes a request for a fire hydrant waiver. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along the south side of Highway 99, New Salem Highway, and it's to the west of Jackson Ridge Road. The applicant is proposing to divide about two and three-quarter acres from an existing eight-acre tract. The new lot will have frontage along Highway 99. However, access will be provided via an access easement across the remaining five-acre tract to the south. They've also requested a fire hydrant waiver, as the nearest hydrant is almost 2,000 feet from the property, and information provided by Consolidated Utility District indicates that the line cannot support a fire hydrant. This item's actually been on the agenda for the last couple Planning Commission meetings. My understanding is they're still having some issues with the soils on the property, trying to make sure that that meets the requirements of the state. We tried to contact the applicants today. We did get ahold of their design engineer to find out if they still wanted to have this deferred. He was going to try to call the applicants. We never did hear back from him. I do not see them in the audience. Actually, I pretty much know everybody who's in the audience, but no one's here representing this request, so at this point, it probably would be prudent just to defer action until our next day meeting, and hopefully whatever issues they're still trying to work out, they can have worked out. We're hoping that maybe somebody would be here tonight, since we didn't get any word to take it off the agenda.
Thank you, Steve. Motion to defer and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. That's item seven will be deferred. Now we're ready for item number nine, which is rezoning request in public hearings. Item A, Monty Turner. Item number is thirteen dash A zero one one. Location is 5854 Shelbyville Highway. County Commissioner is Tiffany Phillips. Size of the lot is approximately 2.9 acres. Tax map, 158 parcel 76.00. The existing zoning is commercial neighborhood. Proposed zoning is commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property, and this request is to rezone property from commercial neighborhood to commercial services. This is the site in question. Commissioners are probably pretty familiar with this. The property has an existing single-family home on it. It was originally rezoned by the commission, well, the commission recommended rezoning to the county commission, which rezoned the property back in 2011. They made a request for services at that time with a conditional use permit for a convenience market and a restaurant. After the zoning was approved, the Planning Commission did approve two separate site plans for the property, both of them which involved a subway restaurant. No construction ever resulted from either of those two site plans, and for whatever reason, the plans to build a subway there have fallen through. So the applicant has now contracted with the applicant, Monty Turner. The owner of the property has contracted with the applicant to purchase the property to build a Dollar General at the site. The primary reason for this rezoning request is under the original commercial neighborhood zoning, retail, general retail uses are a permitted use, which the Dollar General store would fall under. However, under commercial neighborhood, it only allows a maximum of 5,000 square feet. Their proposal is looking at about 9,100 square feet, which is similar to what other stores that they've built in Rutherford County. So because of that, they've asked for rezoning to commercial services, which does allow for larger commercial retail uses in that zone. Just to give you just an idea of the property, this is standing on a property looking across the street. I guess this would be to the northeast. This is, again, looking to the northeast Shelbyville Highway there. This is looking straight up to the north along Shelbyville Highway. That's the neighboring property to the north. That's the entrance to the property right there, directly across the street. You can see that's Ellis Drive in the background, the existing market. Looking further down the street here, looking down south. The reason we really looked at commercial neighborhood when we did the zoning map, one other thing I didn't want to tell you about, the uses originally proposed, that's basically one of the things we looked at when trying to determine the zoning for the commercial areas especially. The uses that were originally proposed on the property did lend themselves to commercial neighborhood zoning. If the uses had been a little bigger, we probably would have chosen commercial services for that. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
Any questions for staff at this point?
Doug, I was thinking there was a pond on the property. I didn't see it in that photo there. Is it gone or?
Well, I know that they were proposing to dig something in the front as part of the site plan approval. Don't remember just a pond specifically on the property. Mr. Corbett may have a little more knowledge on that, but I know they were proposing to dig one in the front.
I don't think there was a pond on that piece of property.
Mr. Reed?
Jamie's shaking his head, so.
There may be.
Jamie, come on up and answer this question.
Well, and the other one before, I think we were talking about a different entrance and exit out there, too, when we're talking about a...
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. The, yeah, the original, we're still using that same entrance to come in. It's the same exact location, but the pond you're referring to is...
Right here, a bunch of that and right on the back. We got a different form pond there now. We're going to take that out and re-put it back in the station. It's over on the other side where it originally was on the subway.
It seemed like we had a great discussion about the enter and exit off of, for the other location, I guess, so we, what I was talking about, wasn't we going in a, like a horseshoe type, you know, an in one way and out the other, or is it?
We still came to this central...
Going back to this?
Yeah, we went to this three, a left, out, through, and one coming in, and that was what was approved with T.DOT also originally.
Okay, because of the cut through right there is in front of where we're...
Exactly. Yes, sir. Exactly across from that.
Are you up here, Jamie? Anything unusual about this site or?
No, sir. It's a pretty straightforward Dollar General, and I mean, it's just modified it from the subway and added the Dollar General store in it.
Pretty much the same as the last Dollar General that we did.
Yes, sir. It's a standalone Dollar General on this one, yes, sir, on 2.9 acres, which yields itself good. You've got a septic system in the back right with a detention pond up front of that.
Of course, this is just a rezoning at this point in time. You'll be back with a site plan.
Correct.
I think. We did approve a site plan for the subway there. Did we not have the...
Yeah, two of them.
Remember, had that new-style drainage system?
Yes, sir.
With the sediment-type thing, and so all that's just behind us, and we start all over again.
That's correct. We're putting just a straight detention stormwater pond out front.
We'll get all that whenever you bring a site plan to us, if and when this is passed.
That's correct.
Any other questions for staff?
Doug, what's, as building, does going to commercial services, like this is 9,100, what does it go to?
Well, there really isn't a limit. Now, there are limits in commercial zones as far as floor area ratio and lot coverage, so you just can't build as big a huge building as you want on property. Plus, there's height limitations as well. I mean, it all, it would vary by site, you know, without really looking at, doing an analysis, I couldn't tell you exactly how big a building you could get on there, but provided it meets all its lot coverage, floor area ratios and all that, there really shouldn't be any big issue, but there's not a maximum, per se.
If none, it's time for our public hearing, and at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning, rezoning request can come forward. Is the applicant here? Monty, you want to come up? Turn on the firing line.
Planning Commission, I'm Monty Turner, the developer for the proposed project. Happy to answer any questions. Again, it's a 9,100 square foot freestanding Dollar General, no shops attached. We'll get into a lot of the details as far as detention and parking requirements, landscaping requirements in the site plan process. As far as traffic, this should generate less than, I think it was a C-store and a subway previously planned, so we're usually around 20 to 30 customers per hour.
2.9 acres, almost three acres, is that kind of standard for what you've been doing?
It's a little bit larger, but the septic area is very limited, so it would be, we'd be unable to really subdivide it further, so we're kind of stuck with the larger site. We can usually, about an acre and a half, we usually accommodate our developments, but in this case, we just have to deal with the 2.9 acres that we have.
Can you compare it to one of the pieces of the division?
Yes, sir.
Size-wise?
Yes, sir. Exactly. Exact same size. I think this, we'll turn this one. That one's a 70 wide by 130 deep, and this will be 130 wide by 70 deep. It's just a different prototype.
Thank you, Monty.
Thank y'all.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this rezoning request? Not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We're open for questions.
How many of us agree with the same comment?
Have a motion to approve?
I agree.
And a second. Any other questions or comments before we vote? We have a motion to approve. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Staff reports, as we, before we get into that, let me make just a couple of announcements. Next Tuesday, I think it's a week from tomorrow, at 2:00, there'll be a party to end all parties across the road. That's Tuesday afternoon, June 18, over at the Planning Commission building. So if you can, please, let's send Dale off with the rousing round of applause and appreciation.
I didn't know about it.
We'll also tentatively, as we get into the work session, tentatively have a public hearing on the subdivision regulations at our August 12 meeting, I believe it is, August, Monday, August the 12, and that'll be a 6:00 PM meeting, so mark your calendars accordingly. That's, of course, subject to change, but right now, that's tentatively what we have in mind. Be a brief announcement at the Rutherford County Commission on Thursday night about those intents for those commissioners who are interested in attending that or being kept up to date as to the progress on our subdivision regs. And with that, any reports other than kind of get into the subdivision regs, Doug?
No, sir. I have nothing else besides.
Okay.
Go first. Okay, thank you. Well, tonight, we're just going to continue discussions on the draft of the subdivision regulations. As you know, we've looked these over for the last several meetings now. We've made several changes, discussed several issues regarding the sprinkler system, sidewalk requirements. We've talked some about the new bonding requirements, as well as the process for how we're going to consider plats, what are considered minors, majors, minor, or partitions, excuse me. One of the items that's still kind of outstanding that we had some discussion on at the last meeting, we're going to continue discussion on tonight, is regarding the road construction, the road bed. You'll recall, at our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion regarding whether or not we needed, the county was proposing in our regulations, eight inches of stone for the base as opposed to six inches of stone. There was some discussion about that. We have Mr. Greg Brooks, our highway superintendent. He's here with us tonight to help discuss this as well, but at this point, I'm going to turn this discussion over to Mr. Corbett, and he's going to lead the discussion on this.
Well, there were a couple of things came out of the meeting. One is a request that we call a couple of engineering firms, which I've talked to, I left a message with Hudson Steel, and I've also talked to SCC. Jamie's here to talk about their opinion of six versus eight. Mr. Brooks was out of town at our last meeting, and so he is available for comments as we go forward. And so my suggestion is first, let Mr. Brooks give his comments and stuff, listen, and we'll just take the questions as they come up and see how you guys want to progress. He's, I believe, has also developed some typical costs for the, going from six to eight inches on a subdivision, how much you might expect based on current costs on rock and stuff. So, Mike, Mr. Brooks, would you come up to the stand, please?
What we did earlier was try to do a cost analysis based on lineal feet of road, and we took a couple of different subdivisions, looked at how many lots would be developed in how many lineal feet of road. So what we've come up with is, you know, it's basically for two additional inches of base stone, it would cost approximately, depending on, you know, every situation will be a little different, but it would be approximately $3.90 per lineal foot. Now, in the comparisons we did, that does amount to roughly $218 per lot to increase our base stone from six inches to eight inches. Now, that's just, you know, that's just some cost, looking at some cost, you know. I have here a sheet that kind of represents what some other counties and cities close to us are doing as far as their depth of base stone and pavement spec. I hoped to have some more technical data supporting, you know, how much we would gain in longevity of our streets. Unfortunately, I have contacted a couple of people, and I don't have any information from them. I do have something from T.DOT here that is kind of a design criteria that they have, and it's based on, you know, average daily traffic. And what they recommend is also four roads that have less than 1,000 cars per day, but more than 200 cars per day. They have a table here that recommends eight inches of base stone, but it also recommends three inches of AMEX, which is binder. It's a large binder. And then two inches of B-modified, which is a smaller binder with an inch and a quarter of finish, riding surface. So that's even, you know, that's even more than what I'm recommending. However, on, you know, in all fairness, looking at both sides of this thing, for streets that have less than 200 cars, then they recommend eight inches of base stone with two inches of B-modified binder, no AMEX, right to B-modified, and an inch and a quarter of topping. So that's, you know, that's more base stone than we're currently using. However, it's less binder. Currently, we're using two and a half inches of B-modified. So, you know, and then, you know, you have my opinion, which is that eight inches of base stone would be significantly stronger than the six. Now, I hope to have, you know, some supporting documentation of that. I don't, I can tell you that in my time at the highway department, the fares that we've had to repair have been primarily because of the soil conditions. The soil conditions are, you know, they're just not, they're not really adequate. You know, these roads, these roads that we're doing, the roads that I'm talking about have been inspected by the county inspector. Now, I'm not, I'm not talking about roads that are old and used to be buggy trails. I'm talking about subdivision roads, new streets, that kind of thing. And so they were proof rolled before the, you know, the subgrade was proof rolled before the base stone was put in, and they passed proof roll, or the base stone wouldn't have been put down. But conditions change. You know, you get some, you get some water in there, and the conditions change. So just in an effort to strengthen the subgrade is, in my opinion, enough to raise the amount of base stone. I can tell you that with our, with the highway department's current asphalt budget, we have enough money, if we watch what we're doing, we have enough money, we have 960 miles of road roughly, we have enough money to pave 45 miles of that 960 feet, miles of road. We can pave 45 miles in a year's time. That means that the roads we pave, they've got to stay good for 15 years. And so, you know, I'm just looking at trying to get, you know, trying to get a longer life out of the roads we're building, because, you know, unfortunately, the roads we have now, we have to maintain. So I say, as we move forward, then, you know, we should look at strengthening those roads. I will say that I think, I think, you know, the Planning Commission and the County Commission has done a good job in being proactive in the past, and that's what we're trying to do here. That's all it amounts to, so. Anybody?
I've talked to three or four excavation guys that are building these roads, and they all seem to be of the same opinion that the problem is usually in the base. You know, you're talking about the pug mix or whatever's on top, and if the road isn't compacted well to start with, you know, it doesn't matter how much gravel you got on top. If it starts to pump or starts to move, it's going to fail.
You're talking about subgrade?
Subgrade, yeah, the subgrade.
Right.
And you're talking about adding more crush stone on top, more pug mix, whatever.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, and the way I took it and the way they took it. And I've had a couple tell me, they said, well, they would rather see us change the regulations where maybe somebody that was certified with checking compaction or something like that would go out and certify the subgrade, because the way I, from what I understand now, we load a dump truck and drive it down the road, Mr. Reed does, and he watches to see if that road moves.
That's correct.
And that is not the most technical thing in the world, but it does show you if it's going to move, you know, but, you know, then sometimes...
Based on the conditions that are there when it's being proof rolled.
And stuff, so, I mean, I just, just the guys that I, I've talked to, three different licensed contractors that build subdivision, they've all said, in their opinion, and they've all been in this 25 years or more, that it didn't matter how much gravel you put on top, if that base is, if there's a soft spot, it's going to come through. If there's eight inches... If there's eight inches gravel, 12 inches gravel, however much, it's going to, and that does make sense, you know, if it's going to start pumping. And so I was just wondering if there's been any thought to maybe requiring a different type of, you know, testing or something like that, to make sure that subgrade is, because if you don't have a good foundation, doesn't matter what kind of house you put on top of it, and it's the same situation.
I agree completely. I do agree with Mr. Jordan, and the test, I think you're, you know, you're referring to is a nuke test, what I've always called a nuke test. It's a backscatter test, they bring a machine out, set it down, and it will give density, you know, and there are some, I do have some issues with proof rolling as a method of testing, because conditions change, number one. Number two, when you proof roll, you know, you're basically rolling a truck down a compacted subgrade, you know, one time, and back up the other side, and if it doesn't move, then it's ready for base stone. And that's really all you have to go by, if that's the method of testing you're using. However, when those rock trucks start coming in there hauling gravel, then we're not talking about one load anymore. We're talking about multiple loads in the same path. And, you know, not questioning anybody's integrity or morals or anything, but, you know, what's going to happen if, when they start hauling that rock in, they start seeing some movement? Are they going to stop everything, dig those areas out, recompact them, maybe look at putting shotrock in them, and then move forward, or they're just going to go forward and hope for the best? You know, we don't know, but I can tell you that we cannot have an inspector on every job all the time. There's been a time lately that we could have done that, but I don't think any of us will see that again anytime soon. You know, we, normally, we have more jobs going on than we can man full-time, all the time. But, you know, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to some, to some better testing. And I think Mr. Reed would agree that, you know, there are better ways to do it now. So I wouldn't be opposed to that at all. And I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to create a hardship for developers or homebuyers. You know, I've always been pro, pro-building, pro-growth. You know, that's the way I made my living up until this point. So I'm not trying to create a hardship, but, but I am trying to, you know, look out for the best interest of, of the county, and make the, make the budget we have go as far as possible, so. If those, I don't know what the cost of those tests are, but, you know, who's going to incur the cost of those, of those tests?
I would think it'd be the developer. They'd have to get that signed off on before it was approved, you know, and that was actually one of the engineers in the county said to me, and he said, he didn't want to make a bunch of enemies, he was, but he said, he thought that would be a good, you know, we ought to be modern, we've been doing that for decades.
Oh, yeah.
Rolling these roads with a loaded truck, you know, and...
Yeah.
And he said, well, as times change, move up, and if you have a...
Yeah, you go try to build an airport room while you can't run a truck over, you're going to have to look out there.
That's right. And if it has to be certified by somebody who puts a license stamp on it...
A proctor test.
And that might, that might take another few days in the process, or something like that, by getting a guy out there or something like that, but...
He can do the calculations and pass or fail right there, right then.
And, you know, so that's just what was told to me, that might be a better thing than, than saying, let's put a third more gravel down, because, like I said, if the base isn't there, the base isn't there regardless of how much gravel you put down there.
Well, that's, that's a very, very valid, very valid point.
To Will's point, is that a road board issue, or is that a engineering, planning commission issue?
I think we were to change the type of test.
I assume that the county engineer, you know, it should be in the design specs that we're trying to come up with now. You agree, Doug?
I agree. The testing is a, is a process thing that you can do in the office, basically change the testing procedure, that's, that's not a big deal. The, the depth of the rock has come through the county commission because those are our standards as far as, so it's a combination of the two. And I don't think there's any problem. I think in the past, the tests that you're talking about, we did the proof roll as maybe a little bit too expedient to help people out, because if you've got people who are doing the other tests, and they're scheduled to come out on Thursday at noon, and you have problems, and then they reschedule, it can slow your process up a little bit, and you get complaints, but, so the testing procedure is a process, it's like a SOP that you establish in the office, this is the way we're going to do it, and that can be changed very easily. But the, the technical aspects of the rock and stuff is something we need to prove through the commission itself.
Mr. Brooks, I got a question. How do we know that the six inches is being put down?
Well, that's something that we, we have to, you know, first of all, we physically look at it. You know, our inspector physically looks at, at the depth of stone, you know, he's out there when they're putting it down, not the entire time they're putting it down. And then we have another little failsafe that we collect all the tickets, all the stone tickets, and then we can do the calculations based on, you know, how many feet of road we have, how many, how many tons of stone it should take to cover that many feet of road, how deep. So that's the two things we have right now.
Does it vary?
It can vary, it's not, you know, concrete is different. Concrete setup, you know, you form concrete, or you run concrete off a string line. Grading equipment, you know, I think most, Jamie could probably speak to this, most jobs have a plus or minus one-tenth. You agree, Jamie? In the subgrade. Now, a tenth is a tenth of a foot, so it's, you know, it's basically an inch and three sixteenths, I think, so, you know, if you imagine a straight line, and then plus or minus a tenth, then, you know, that tenth could take you from six inches of stone to, you know, four and seven eighths inches of stone, and it's really, it would still be inside spec. So there's some, you know, there's, it's difficult to maintain an exact depth, because you're just, it's just, it's grading equipment, and it's not exact, like it were running on, like concrete would on a form, or on a string line, or something like that, so. Do we know that it's being put down six inches deep? For the most part, yes. I think in the cases where we have stone that's less than six inches, in most instances, it is just a, it's, it's a, it's a mistake if we don't have six inches. I don't think anybody's trying to cheat, in other words, you know, I think it's just, you know, a little deviation in the, in the subgrade, or a little deviation in the, in the base stone, and, you know, if you're targeting six and you miss it by an inch, then now you've got five. Or you could have seven.
So if the stone is less, and the...
Subgrade.
If it gives away, is that a contributing factor? Because it ain't enough stone there, or what?
It definitely can be. I mean, that, you know, if, Mr. Jordan here is right, if the subgrade is compacted and as dense as it should be, assuming that it's good soil to start with, then it should stay that way. However, obviously, six inches of stone is better than four, you know. I mean, what I'm saying is, if we were putting four inches of stone down, we would have more failures, even on good, good soil. But it, and that's another thing to take into consideration, you know, the fact that, you know, this county's been being developed vigorously for several years, if not decades, and some of the better sites have been developed. So now we're developing on, on land that, you know, we have to have step systems, it won't perk, you know, obviously, we've changed soil types, so that's, that's another thing to consider, too.
You know what, the other entities around us, the city of Murfreesboro, the entities in Williamson or Wilson County?
I do have some of that here. The city of Murfreesboro, I think, spoke to the group recently, Chris Griffith, I believe, and said that they did six inches of base stone. And that's, that's on their low-volume streets. You know, there are other streets, all their other streets have eight inches of base stone. That's the city of Murfreesboro. And they also, you know, and like I say, in all fairness, you know, I want to, I don't want to, I want to be transparent, I don't want to hide anything from you, but that, on those, on those streets, those low volumes, the streets they consider low volume, which I don't know what traffic count is on that, unfortunately, but anyway, the streets that they consider low volume have six inches of base stone, two and a half inches binder, an inch and a half of top, of surface. And that's what we currently have, you know, regardless of what, what the street we're designing for. Well, the under 200 cars was a T-Dot thing. I don't know if that's, I assume that's what Murfreesboro City does, but, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to imply that I know that for sure.
Mr. Brooks, I wanted to ask you a question on the...
I was going to give you a couple more...
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Couple more, for instance, here. City of Franklin, eight inches of base stone, three inches of binder, inch and a half of surface. City of Brentwood, eight, three, and two. Metro Davidson County, eight, two, one and a half. Now there, we've gone back to, you know, we've lost half inch of our binder. City of Columbia, same, eight, two, one and a half. Gallatin, six, two and a half, one and a half, which is what we have. Hendersonville, eight, two, one and a half. Smyrna, eight, three, one and a half. Looking at this, these are the ones I have that are close to us, and just the short version is, out of 10 that have, out of 10 of these that have eight inches of base stone, seven of those have less asphalt than we have. So for, you know, so, I don't want to... Correct.
Is this all, is that their subdivision roads, or is that their, like, their city streets, like their collector roads, or, because, I mean, in most cases, a subdivision, unless it's in a certain situation, it's going to, those are all the low-volume counts for all their, all those municipalities. Because, of course, the city street is going to be a lot more traffic than, you know, a dead end.
Yeah, this is, this is low volume, this is, you know, they're, kind of their minimum.
I talked a little bit two weeks ago about a difference between a collector street and a subdivision, the main street and the cul-de-sac streets that go off each side, because, you know, a little dead end street that's got eight houses on it, it's going to have less traffic than the one that all the, all the others feed into, but I don't know where you draw that line, that gets...
Well, then you get into the garbage trucks and the whole thing. I interrupted you.
Question I had there.
I don't, I don't know the answer, you know, where's the cutoff? I can tell you that it will be, you know, logistically, it will be hard, you know, like I was, like I was saying earlier, you know, we collect rock tickets, we have so many feet of road, if some of those roads become eight inches, some of them are six inches, you know, where do we draw that line, you know, where do we, it'd be difficult to really track at that point, so.
You said, most of your situations that you're having to repair, or you're having some issues with, that's on that six inches of rock?
Correct.
So, I mean...
That's what should have been six inches of rock.
That should, right, right. So, I mean, it's, those issues, I mean, evidently, it's enough for you to be here saying, we need eight. We need to call that a requirement of eight instead of six.
I do think that that would head off some, some failures.
So we're still having that many issues, though, is what I'm saying? I mean, is it, this is all new subdivision, these older subdivisions, it was built back in the 90s, 80s, 70s, or something, or what, you know?
Well...
I guess it's all over the board, really, but, I mean, it just, you know, since they were all six, then, and those issues that you're having, yeah.
We've had some failures and some new ones, but most of those have been because they, we hit that, we hit that period where we weren't getting topping on them fast enough, and we had some penetration from water and that kind of thing through the binder, because they hadn't ever been topped out, because they hadn't ever been built out, so.
You mentioned the soil failures. Well, the compactness that you're, that Will has suggested, will that help address any of the soil issues, or those two completely different issues?
No, they, they, it would definitely, it would definitely be to our advantage to, to have some better testing in place. No question about it, it would, for sure, solve some of the issues we're having.
It seems like the majority of those around us have already maybe found out that some of this, that the eight seems to work better than the six, by some of the standards you have there. And then we've mentioned the fact that this street should have this, that street should have that, or this road should have that and whatever. Looks like to me, if you set up a general standard, we're a little bit better there. We've already mentioned the fact of the problem of inspecting and having enough inspectors. This county, in the last two years, has already grown to 12,000 people in the last two years. I just saw that the other day, and it's not going to slow down. And as far as keeping those inspections going, if we have a set standard and a good standard where we keep these roads up, seems like that might be the better way to go. But by seeing what some of these other areas are doing, it seems like they're already visualizing some of this that we're getting ready to look for the future for.
Well, again, I, you know, I'm not trying to create a hardship on anyone, I, you know, I certainly don't want to do anything to, you know, slow down our, our growth. I can assure you, I do not.
Well, Doug, whatever we support here tonight, will go to that public hearing that Jeff alluded to earlier in August, and anybody that wants to come speak for or against any changes will have the opportunity to do it, so at that time, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
With, with that...
Before you get away, before you get away from the podium, and I don't know whether this would fall to you or fall to the county engineering department, but I would like some more information on cost benefit to the county on the new, on a more modern compaction test. If you could, and that's a separate issue, but since it came up tonight, you know, I...
Are you asking, are you, are you asking for, like, what the test would cost? How many would, how many would be recommended, that kind of thing?
Yeah, the cost benefit ratio maybe of some sort, you know, you and the engineering department, I...
Yeah, I think, I think what we can do on that is, the engineering department and working with Mr. Brooks and the highway department will come up with something, we'll call some people, get some estimates, do a little research, and tell you a little bit more about the test, what that happened, make a presentation. Now, if it happens later from here, I can ask Mr. Hill, working with Mr. Brooks, to do that, give that to you.
Well, my purpose is not to cause a hardship on developers, it's to end up with a better road for the county, you know, and if they end up having to go back and dig out, maybe before y'all take it over, then it's a hardship on them, too. It might be a benefit to them.
Right. I've, I've always thought that, you know, I've always thought that, you know, inspections are a good thing, they're kind of quality control for the contractor, if he's looking at it, you know, objectively.
Absolutely right. If somebody can identify that soft spot, well, that guy's got the equipment sitting right there, he can fix it in a few hours and minimal amount of money, instead of coming back, like I said, two hours later, I mean, two years later, or something like that, having to remobilize and cut up pavement and everything else, and repave, I mean, a $500 fix can become a $25,000 fix, or something like that. So I think it'd be in everybody's best interest to have, you know, more sophisticated testing and, and know exactly what we got, and, you know, and they can feel at ease and move on.
I know we've, we've had several of these work sessions, excuse me, that was you. We've had several of these work sessions where this issue's been brought up as far as the thickness of the base stone. So just in an effort to, just in an effort to move forward and get some resolution, decide what we're going to do, are we looking at, are we, are we now talking about two separate things? Are we talking about new testing as well as eight inches of base stone?
I intended that as a separate issue, you know.
Right.
It came up tonight, you know, I think it ought to be looked at, but before you left the podium, I wanted to ask if y'all would check into that. So it's a separate issue from the base stone, in my opinion.
Or sort of?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a separate issue.
Well, and, Mr. Brooks, I want to turn that question back on you.
Okay.
Do you think it's an and? Do you feel like we need to improve the compactness and still do the eight inches?
Yes.
I'll say I've talked to three road builders, and they were all going to come here tonight, because they were all going to talk about it, and I see nobody in the audience, so they must not be as upset as they seemed like they were, so, you know.
Well, we'll find out during that public meeting, so I'm sure, I'm sure there'll be some of them attend that. Eight, keeping the asphalt like it is, which is two and a half inches of B-modified and an inch and a half of surface.
Okay. I'll agree with that, if we move on, so can that carry on?
Well, on the, would you, would you also do the nuke testing and if the, if the compaction was good, you'd still stay at six?
No, I think we need to, I, I, I recommend that we move to eight.
And if, well, if you're moving to eight, then why do you even need to go to the nuke test?
Is this
Been doing it, should've been doing
Is this just on heavy traffic road or every road going eight?
Every road that comes before the planning, is my understanding, every new road that's gonna go in the subdivision regs, if you're gonna build a subdivision, that's how you're gonna do it.
They'll not say that the new testing would fall down to procedure and that would be for the county engineer staff to decide on, that's not our decision anyway.
Yeah.
You know, so
Right.
So all we're talking about is eight inches of gravel and, and they're gonna look into that, you know.
Right.
I think my, my opinion is, if, if most of your failures are because of the soil conditions, you know, we're looking at the roads, like you said, that have been exposed for a while, then the, the purpose that we're trying to do here is to provide a better product for the county so that your maintenance schedule is, if we will, is stretched out, because we gotta stretch the dollars. So if, let's say the test costs $200, I'm just throwing out a number for that road, now you don't, you test every so often, and then is it worth that $200 for potentially extending the life of that road for three years before we have to repave it? I, I think that's what you're talking about, a cost benefit. I think regardless, I think we should go to eight inches and, uh, I think the office then should look at their testing procedure, then, there's nuclear densityometer testing, there's other types of things that you can do to try to verify that your base is more sound so that you got a, a road, uh, one of the things we're doing on the bonding is they have to put that top coat on within a year, that keeps, keeps the water out of our subbase, that's one of the problems we're running to now. I think it's a complete process that you're looking at, of which the stone is, is one, which, uh, helps us, we think, with integrity quite a bit. The inspection part will have to be looked at, but again, that's a, that's an SOP that we work out with the highway department, and because at the end, our office tells them, we've inspected this based on what we've agreed on, it meets our requirements, and turn it over to the road board. So if we, in my opinion, if we do both of these, then we turn over a better product to the road board and then the road, uh, highway commissioner says, alright, then my money, which I can still only do 45 miles, but I don't have to do them every 10 years, maybe I have to do them every 15, basically, you're, you're extending the life of the surface of that road.
Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Lynch is, if he was making that as a motion?
Right.
I'll second that motion.
Not sure we need a motion or a second, but a consensus would be fine. All those that kind of wish to, to go with the, uh, road superintendent's recommendation, say, raise your hand. Yeah, that's right, everything will be, of course, subject to a public hearing.
I just have one question, are we on about implementing the nuke test for the subgrade? Because I'm gonna tell you that if you've got a poor subgrade, eight inches, it may be different. If you've got poor soil, if you've got poor soil, they have to be over excavated, they have to fill the surface rock and then test it again. So it's similar to me to make eight, uh, new test on subgrade, you throw them anyway. So I, I would be happy to do, to, to get to the nineties, get to the two thousands and, and acquire a new test for the subgrade, and only then can you really determine how great, how strong that soil is.
I'm in.
Six inches, it may be different, if you've got poor soil.
No, I agree.
So you either keep the nuke it or you, or you keep being like caveman and eyeballing it and dropping the truck over.
Digging it back up, digging it back up, then putting the shotrock in, then putting the shotrock in that you're speaking of, yeah, I agree, I, I completely agree.
If you have four, if you have four subgrade, can't on some, no matter what.
I, I, I'm, I'm quite confident that, that, that nuke test is, is a very, very effective way to tell what you have.
And do most real painting contractors own that nuke equipment or is that always a third party?
It's usually third party, it's usually third party.
Yeah, that requires a special license, you gotta have a special license to transport the device and because of the, right, right.
Yeah, it's, yes, it is, but it's not, no, you're not gonna glow in the dark. It's a machine about the si, it's a machine about the size of my note, it's a machine about the size of my notebook. It's about the size of my notebook and it's about this thick, and it has a probe that goes down into the ground, and then, you know, the, the box sends a signal to the probe and how, how many times it reports back in a lot of amount of time gives them density. It's, it's not, it sounds really high-tech and complicated, but it's not really, I mean, it's, it's been out there for a long time.
And, and then if the nuke test doesn't pass, then you or our county inspector can say, relax, Mr. Contractor, you have to dig this far, spot up, build a full stone and test it again.
Right.
He doesn't go any farther down plain rock until he's passed at least five.
Right.
And if I'm understanding, all these years we've never done that.
Right.
We just, we proof roll, we test it, we do the truck test.
That's correct, however, in all these years you're speaking of, I've been in, I've, I've been a contractor on several parking lots that required that very thing, parking lots. So, you know, and, and another thing you wanna look at, you know, if, if you have one, if you have one test that fails out of, out of 10, that's one thing, but if you have three or four tests that fail out of 10, then maybe you need to do some more testing, look at some other areas, so, yeah, huh? I, I can't answer that, I, I don't know, I'm sure they have a, I'm sure they have some type of criteria where they go out and they have, you know, so many feet of road and they test, they make X amount of tests per, probably per square yard, I would assume, but
I think that's part of the ASTM procedure for using that.
Yeah.
And it's based on statistical average and stuff.
Well, and, and you mentioned that most of the good sites are gone, so what soils we have out there are not good to build on, so even more reasons in my opinion to have the new test is there's a lot of uncutting going on.
I'm trying to cross the mountain, limestone rock, black dirt, it's black dirt, like crop, like, like crop.
Decomposed organic material, just whatever, yeah.
Black dirt, that's, that rock, that, where that black dirt is, when I was down black dirt, it's gone, it's gone, I don't want it.
I can take you to the county crusher and show you a mountain of it that we dug up just in the amount of time I've been there.
I hate to muddy the water, I hate to muddy the water, but would we be better off adding another half inch of binder or something instead of adding more gravel or a little more topping or something like that?
I think it'd cost more.
I don't know.
I think it would cost more, you know, given, given current
I've got just enough experience to be dangerous on this, because I, I've done some of this, but I don't, I'm by no means a professional, so I, I can just talk about enough just to, just to make a fool of myself, but
Well, I, I really just, this is just an opinion again, but in my opinion, I think the asphalt specs that we have designed in our subdivision regulations right now are adequate, if we're putting it down on top of good material. If you lift it up off the ground, it'll fail under its own weight, so we have to have it on good material.
I have another question, is, is there another test besides what we're calling the nuke test, are there more tests out there that is
No, this is, this is the, uh,
The premier
Industry, industry standard, yes, it is. Used to be they came out with a, well, you don't wanna know all that.
Let me just, let me see if I can kind of bring us to some type of, some type of clarification, I'm, I'm getting confused, uh, I think we were trying to keep these two issues separate and, and, and now that, now we're getting them all kind of mingled, so the motion, as I understood, was to adjust the subdivision regulations from six to eight inches of stone. The testing and everything is something that we're going to look at, at some point in time, so
I don't think we look at that at all, that's, that's on Dale, is that not correct?
Right.
But somebody's gonna have to look
And I think Dale has hurt us, so I feel sure that there's gonna be something coming, but I don't think it's our decision on, on that testing, I believe that's just a procedural thing, so
But somebody's gonna have to look at it and
They'll be in a state and I'll start that ball rolling in the morning.
We need to follow up to make sure that somebody does, so
We'd like to know what you're looking at.
So, so right now, we're looking for a consensus, six or eight, so, uh, the, the recommendation is eight by the road board and the road superintendent, uh, and that's what we've got in our draft.
That's in our draft right now, yes, sir.
Uh, leave it at eight, everybody, and, and kind of raise your hand, leave it at eight. Uh, six, eight has it, okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Greg while he's up here?
Thank you.
Thank you, maybe, uh, Greg, if you could follow up, uh, you were looking at, uh, maybe following up with that cost comparison and
Yes, sir.
Getting some more information there, if, if you can bring that to us as soon as you have it, maybe even at our next meeting?
Okay.
Okay?
At the morning meeting?
That's correct, and, and that next meeting, by the way, is, uh, when's, is Monday, the 24th of this month at 9:00 AM? If you have that, just go ahead and bring it with you then and we'll update it then, okay?
I'll have it, we have it too.
Thank you. Okay, is that it?
That's all that, unless you had any other questions about the regulations themselves, uh, we didn't really have anything else on the agenda to discuss.
Okay, so at the next couple of meetings, and we may not do it at our nine o'clock meeting, but at our next couple of meetings, uh, kind of have, uh, all of the information put together and pass out with the changes that we've discussed and highlight the important issues that we can, uh, also discuss, if, if you could do that, Doug.
Yes, sir, absolutely, be glad to.
And we'll, we'll be ready to go and better informed when we have our public meeting in August.
Yeah, I will say that, uh, we did advertise both our meetings this month to have work sessions, uh, I mean, the next meeting at our, our day meeting could just be us handing out the, what you just mentioned, Mr. Phillips, and if you had questions on that, uh, so it'd be more of an informal type work session, and then from there, we can decide, you know, tentatively, we've set that public hearing for August, at that point, we'll have a more concrete idea and be ready to advertise, I think, at that point.
Thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing further.
Not, we're all done, let me just say that, uh, sometimes as, as confusing as it seems to a, a, a person like me, it impresses me a lot that there's so much knowledge on this commission about certain things that can quiz an expert like our, uh, road superintendent on rock base, uh, so, uh, I applaud you guys for knowing a lot more than a layman like me, uh, and can actually, uh, have a, a, a good, open discussion as to what is really in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. With that, we're adjourned.